Such as an IMA and make sure there's no, you know, dissension and fighting between the town and the village. And no, I know you mentioned to me some type of interruption of services. I don't know if that was some weird, I don't know what happened there, but I just, it seems like unnecessary discord between the two governments is my view on things.
Kelly, I have a question, okay? The mayor had just said he's going to let the IMA expire. Do we, it's my opinion, we don't even need an IMA. Do we need an IMA? And if we don't have an IMA, what will happen?
So whether or not you want an IMA, that is a policy issue. Whether or not you need one, at this point, it seems a bit unnecessary. Because in the beginning, and I know Desiree can speak to this as well, and Rob too, but the departments were all over the place and they were trying to be shifted and who was going to have what department. And that really needed to be done, so it was clear what responsibilities belonged with whom. So that there was no, as trustee Fabro said, no interruption of services for the village residents. And that's why that was put into place. Then there were amendments to that and it was gradually changed because highway came over. Then all the, by operation of law, the dedication of different things came over to the village. So in my opinion, there isn't a need for an IMA. But obviously, it's up to this board if you want one. The services that you utilize from the town will still legally have to be provided. Such things like the police department, the, I mean, I don't know who else they would police if they're not policing the village.
The courts.
The court system. There's, yep, the animal shelter. They have the lighting district and the refuse districts. Those are things that are going to continue. Sorry, 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 you have the lighting district, they have the refuse district. Those are things that are going to continue regardless of whether or not there's an IMA. The IMA isn't going to change anything at this point. But this is one of the big items in the IMA was that due to those departments and who was handling what, it was agreed that it would go 50/50 for a while. So you were getting 50 and I think the goal was to try and still let them have some at this time. So that's why you weren't taking the full 80%. But it's the policy decision for what you guys want to do.
Understood.
We can let it expire and there's no harm done. So we don't really need it. I don't see a need to go through the IMA. As far as I'm concerned, it's done on December 4th.
It seems to me, I thought we had 90% of it hammered out back in August when we had that public work session. I mean, I don't see why we can't reach another agreement, but that's my opinion, so.
Well, a lot of those provisions say things like the town will continue with the justice court. But the town has to continue with the justice court. And the highway department will do X, Y, and Z. Rob, I'm sorry, it still has to do X, Y, and Z. So those things.
Okay.
Things are still, they still have to happen if you wanted them set out in an agreement. I mean, you could certainly do that, but they still have to.
So what's your thing by law?
No, no, I got, I got that.
Do we really need?
No, no, I understand it's required by law, I do.
I just want to make sure you have the information before you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay. I got a motion in a second. Do I have an all in favor? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Nay.
Okay, three, two, it is. All right. Resolution in support of continued increase to aid. Desiree, you want to explain what AIM is? Is that what we're talking about here, AIM funding?
Sure. So in the state budget, they provide AIM to municipalities. Although there's special legislation for us and I believe South Blooming Grove and maybe one other village. Because we're not part of the whole package, so they have to do special additions for us. But we get 26,000 a year from the state for AIM funding. And NICOM, which is your state representatives that represent and lobby on your behalf, as well as all villages and cities in the state, is recommending support of this legislation that they're trying to get put forward to make AIM something that is permanent.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, can I have motion in a second to drop the following resolution as presented in support of continued and increased state aid for local governments? Do I have a second?
All second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have one extra item. And we're getting close to the end here. Okay, a few short weeks ago, we were contacted by the state senator, James Scoofus's office pertaining to the continuation of the hotel motel occupancy tax. The state senator, along with Assemblyman Chris Ikis, was able to obtain for the village of Woodbury. Said hotel motel occupancy tax expires in August of 2025. So, can I have a motion in a second? I have a question from the, whether we wish, okay. So the question, the question from the senator's office was whether we wanted to continue this hotel motel occupancy tax. And in my opinion, we certainly should. So, I want to know, so can I have a motion in a second to authorize or to approve a resolution to be sent to Senator Scoofus stating our commitment to continuing the hotel motel occupancy tax?
Motion.
I have a motion by trustee Fryban, second by trustee, deputy mayor, Furelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen.
You gotta do a roll call?
No. So, that's it, we're done. Public comment on anything under the sun. You're up.
My name is Fosler Farrar. As I mentioned before, I want to discuss about the student that was hit by a car on 32 trying to go to the outlets for some food. I am a teacher in the district. I have students that are my own and my children are in middle school. The school has addressed it with the students telling the middle schoolers that they are not allowed to go during activities across to the commons to get any food. My daughter brought up a good point to me and she said, I understand I'm in middle school, I can't do that. I don't know if the high schoolers were told the same, I believe they were. But she said, why does it affect me instead of the town protecting me? Instead of the outlets protecting me? And I said, that's a good point. Why should they be affected? Why can't they, as high schoolers or older middle schoolers, go across to the outlets and get some food? When we are the residents? This is our community. If they're playing sports and they want to go eat and we want to keep approving the Woodbury Commons to expand, well, our children are their employees. Our children are the ones that buy from them during the week. Why isn't anyone looking out for our children? I don't know what meetings to go to. I will go to every meeting, just let me know where I need to be to bring this up. I bring it up because I'm a teacher. I bring it up because these are my children. I bring it up because I have kids that play sports that will cross that road, even if I tell them not to, to go get some food. So, I want to know, what are we doing? Who are we working with? Is the district meeting with you? Are you meeting with the district? Are we meeting with the state? I go to small towns for soccer, travel soccer. There's lights by every school. There's blinking lights, there's zones. I don't see that in this town as much. And I'm just trying to understand why and why if we keep approving infrastructure and making the outlets bigger, why aren't we holding them accountable for making safety? Especially when there's a school. Three schools that are connected, that these children are going to regardless as parents or anybody tells them not to, they're going to cross. It's right there in their face. Their clothes they wear are there. They want to go eat there. They want to go hang and walk around there. So, we need more safety, especially when we have schools across from such a big outlet. And so I'm just pouring out to know, what are we doing about it? This is not my child, this is not my student, but I feel like it's just pushed to the side. And I'm not going to let it get pushed to the side because that could have been my child's. That could have been one of my former students. That could have been any one of your children or grandchildren. And we need to be more conscious when we're approving all this infrastructure and building. What's around that and how can we make it safe for everyone?
I will tell you, and I'll let trustee Suriello expand on it a bit. But we did meet with Dr. Norman a few weeks ago. He was an absolute gentleman. This was a subject matter that, one of the subject matters that came up. Sue, you want to kind of take it from there? Kind of went over with him?
You know, one thing that Dr. Norman said was they were, I think internally, starting some kind of task force to try to brainstorm about what they can do. Because it is a state road and they don't have jurisdiction over that, okay? One of the statements out of Dr. Norman's mouth was, we want to try to deter the kids from going there. And as a mom, okay, of now a senior, but last year was crossing that road too, okay? And yes, I had panic attacks for him doing it and trying to make sure that he knew that, you know, he had to be super careful. But as a mom, and I said, good luck. Because like you said, even if you tell your child not to do it, you know, they're with their friends. Come on, we'll just go, we'll get, and it happens, okay? So I don't know how the school would actually deter it. We talked about, we talked about a lot of different random things. But they can't have safety officers out there off the property, you know, on the street. They can't have, we talked about like crossing guards. I mean, I do notice the lines when you go across, they're faded at this point. And you're right, in my thinking about it, a pedestrian bridge would be fabulous.
Who's going to pay for it?
Who's paying for that? Right, exactly. And it would have to be tall enough.
For the trucks.
For the trucks to go under, right?
I just don't want it to be passed from, oh, well, the school can't do anything. Oh, this is a state, the state can't do, and then town can't do. I just don't want this to be forgotten.
And I have reached out to the planning board chair just to like bounce off of him like, can we require the commons to put in a pedestrian bridge? And the answer is, we can ask, but we cannot require by law, okay? So, our hands are to a certain extent tied to, you know.
But if they ask for more projects and to expand, can we request that that be something that must be in place before we do any more?
No.
No?
Right. So.
We all working with Dr. Norman?
Right, and you know, I threw out like shuttling kids over, you know, but then someone's like, well, will the taxpayer be okay with that? And that, you know, and then again, will it really deter them? Because are they going to wait for that shuttle? Are they going, when they got to get back for practice that that shuttle's not running or not convenient for them? They'll be like, let's just run across the street because we got to get to practice, right?
And then there's games, you don't know when they're going to cross that road, before game, after game, and not just be practice, so.
Right, so like, you know, we bounced so many different ideas. And I know they said they were forming like some kind of internal task force to see. And now I, and I was actually really surprised because I ran into, I think it was at the senior center when I spoke at the Golden Age Club. One of the women told me that their grandchild crosses and they were in middle school. And I was not even aware that the middle schoolers were doing that. Like I knew the high schoolers did it. I have a high schooler. I know they do it all the time. But I wasn't aware that the middle schools were actually walking over and crossing too, which kind of, you know, again, they're young and.
And you could scare the middle schoolers. Believe me, the school scared the middle schoolers that they're like, no, 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 I can't even leave the front of the building without our parent because I'm going to get kicked off the team. But so they actually, you know, but I don't know how much that's going to go once you get into high school.
You know, I'm not, I mean, I haven't asked my son, but I'm not aware that the high school has told them not to cross the street. I mean, and I see like, when I dropped off last year in the morning, this is another thing I told Dr. Norman. The kids that don't have parking spots, and let's say they're, only seniors get parking spots. So if you're a junior and you can drive, right? They're parking at the commons and they're walking across. Because I was seeing it every day, kids crossing over to the school and walking up to the high school. So they're parking there. So again, they need to access their vehicles.
Yes, and I could say.
Right. Yeah, and I mean, I personally, and again, I'm not, but I would like to see, like you said, some kind of improvement in the lighting system there to kind of give drivers like a heads up like, there is a school here, you need to slow down, okay? Because these are our kids. And unfortunately, this girl got hit. And I would say that she's probably, unfortunately, not going to be the last person to be hit, whether it's an employee of Woodbury Commons, because I see them letting off on the bus and their employees have to cross in the morning.
We weren't surprised when we heard the news, we were not surprised because we go that road frequently because I have children that play in travel, in modified, and I'm a teacher. And we're constantly going to middle school and back and forth. So I wasn't surprised because like you said, there are employees that are constantly crossing that road. People that are trying to walk there and then the kids. And it wasn't surprising, and you're right, I don't think it's going to be the last.
Unfortunately, like it's still going to be a problem. And it concerns me as well with the expansion. Like it's not safe now, what will it be when you're bringing in X amount of more people here?
And I just don't want it to be forgotten. So like I said, please, you'll probably get sick of me, I'm going to come to every meeting and any meeting I have to go to.
So is there anything that we can do, like DOT wise or write a letter or?
We can try writing a letter, but it's really a state issue because it's a state road.
You can also ask them to put an official sign on it.
Right.
Pedestrian crossing.
Right.
I mean, and at certain hours, maybe ask the state police to even come over and park a car on the entranceway like they do on a busy weekend. Just to slow down the traffic. Because a lot of people that are in such a hurry in the morning, they don't care what color that light is. And in the afternoon too. So maybe, maybe the state police could just send the car over there. The school could ask them. Or the county, or the sheriffs could sit a car there and have it slow down people when kids want to cross the road.
Yeah, I would suggest that we address a letter to the DOT in this case to have it marked as a school crossing and put up a school speed zone through there.
I know it's a 30 mile per hour limit right now. There's even, I think over 45.
The 30 is actually back in Central Valley.
It would be better if the whole area could be a 30. I've even seen 20 miles per hour in Middletown by their schools, but.
A lot of schools have 20. And then more residential.
All right, guys, let's get back to the meeting. We have begun a dialogue with Dr. Norman. We scheduled the meeting, it was one of the first things he brought up with us. We've continued that dialogue because I've had conversations with him this week pertaining to the fires and his consideration for closing the schools and whatnot. So, our relationship is just beginning, but I'm very happy that we're off on the right foot with him. There was different items, go ahead.
Right, and I think also like, and I know, I don't know if this is great for you because you are a teacher for the district, but I would recommend going to a school board meeting and just, you can sign up and you can have, I think it's four minutes to speak. But just kind of giving like a synopsis of, you know, what is it? You know, maybe like a letter from us is fine, but the school district should be, we should be collaborating with the school district as well, asking for these particular things. And I think bringing that to the school board attention because they're well aware of the issue. The school board, the cabinet is well aware of that, okay?
That is on my next plan to go to.
Right.
As a tenured member, I could do that.
Right, okay, so that, and that's fine, if you're comfortable and I don't think there's anything wrong with you. This is not something, this is something that it really does need to be addressed. And I don't think the school's taking it lightly at all.
No, I'm not here to say that, I just don't want it to be like everyone thinks it's all separate.
It's a state road and it just kind of puts a, it does put some kind of roadblock up there.
I think everyone needs to work together because it's a state road and I just want to make sure that it's not just him, the board and not, you know, I want to make sure everyone's working because the more, the louder the voice is, the more something will happen.
Exactly, and I think that if you're going, I think it would be healthy to speak at the town board meeting, the school board meeting. And then I think, you know, next, our next meeting with Dr. Norman, we can have another discussion about that and see, you know, what it is we can collaborate on to get something solid going, to get a letter out there, get all, what is that we are looking for them to do specifically? They may have different ideas as well and get that to.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was good, that was the next thing I was saying, we need to get them, yeah.
All right, anyone else in the public? And she dropped the phone. Hopefully she has insurance.
Susan McConnell, Highland Mills. I want to thank our volunteer firemen, that's all, for their support this week for Greenwood Lake and everything else that's going on. I know we recently discussed a new fire truck. So, thank you for all of them, for their volunteer. Thank you to the mayor for keeping us updated. You know, working down in Jersey, kind of hard to keep your finger on the pulse of what's going on with that fire all day long. So I appreciate being able to access your information. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else in the public? Go ahead, please state your name. No props, what?
No props. Jimmy A. Highland Mills. So first off, let's see. The secret meeting that you guys have, is there a public comment section or no? Um, just saying, I just want to congratulate.
Eight minutes for those meetings in Braille.
Yeah. But.
Anyway, Jimmy, go ahead.
Congratulations to Sue and Vic. I think the response was overwhelming. It really was. The election wasn't even close. I mean, it was, the residents spoke up on what you guys represented, what you guys promised, what you guys have done. And basically, you know, keep on doing it. As far as the IMA, I keep hearing IMA, and for me, it was kind of like, it's that gentleman's agreement. If you need it in black and white, we really don't have a good relationship. I mean, without the IMAs, Rob, are you going to ignore this section or this road? I mean, you know, is Mickey going to turn off the tap? I mean, I mean, really. We're going to do what we're going to do. But again, congratulations to you and Vic. But thank you to Woodbury resident block for showing up this election. It was, it was overwhelming to see the responses. When the results were coming out, just the elation that Woodbury is being fought for. That we're standing up. We see all the other areas, whether it's Monroe, whether it's South Blooming Grove, or whether it's, you know, you saw, you saw the developers walk out of here, okay? But you know what, I got an awful lot of residents here too. I mean, this is gratifying. And I thank everybody that watches the meetings, that shows up at meetings, that is on the Facebook groups, whatever else. But my message is, we're not done. We still got a lot to do. We're going to take a little vacation, I think. But come next election, we're going to finish cleaning house. Thank you.
Thank you, James. All right, anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Rhonda Fabro, Scuny Monk Road, Highland Mills. I would like to say several things. First of all, the agenda comes out very, very close to the time that we are having our meetings. And it is a little difficult, I would think, for people in the village to be able to look at the agenda, look through the information, gather information on the laws if they're so, you know, inclined. It is actually, and I know that it was passed specifically by this board with the majority, that there would not be a 72-hour rule. But state law is a 72-hour law. And so what ends up happening with the agenda is that not only do the people of the village not really have the time to research and understand it fully. And a lot of people are guilty of not really looking at the papers. You can see actually on the village website how many people have looked at the individual forms that are attached to the agendas. You can see how many people have looked at the film clips after the meetings. You can see how many people have looked at the minutes. Unfortunately, it's a very low number. So at any rate, there's that. But there also is the fact that a lot of the information that is going on to the agenda is being shared with only particular people on this board. So, when other people come to the meeting, they've had the chance to look at the agenda, that short period of time that they've been given. And they have questions, valid questions, which are good things that sometimes protect our citizens. And there are people in our community that are sitting in this room laughing because those people are asking questions and scoffing and making noises and being disrespectful. Along with yourself, Andrew Jackamaza. I really wish you wouldn't do that. It creates discord and it isn't nice. I just want my village, my town, my Woodbury to be the people that live here to be nice. And try a little bit harder. And that's really all I have to say, except for one little last thing. The people who come up here to speak at this microphone should also be nice and not be condescending and talking about replacing people while they're standing up here. This is a village board meeting. This is a business meeting. That is what we're here to listen to. Business in our village, not campaigning and not replacing people. There are 13,000 people in this village. And they will vote, hopefully, the people who can vote will vote. But as we've seen, they don't all vote. They don't all come out. And this was a big election. And it was a good turnout. And congratulations Vic and congratulations Sue. I really mean that from the bottom of my heart. I know that you're trying to do a good job and that you're trying to serve our community. And I know that you will continue to try. And I just wanted to say that as well. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right, going once, going twice. Okay. Department comments. The man in many words. You got enough. You had a lot, you spoke.
Spoke a lot.
Hour and a half?
Hour and, well, not an hour and a half, but yeah, all right. You spoke.
Rob Wyatt. John, how's the school going this week? Village treasurer.
I just want to, I don't even know why I'm saying this, but the only person who knows what's on the agenda before it gets distributed is the mayor and the clerk and myself because we're the three that put the agenda and the items that go on the agenda. I will tell you that throughout the week and after the agenda is distributed, some board members do stop in and ask questions. Sue, you sent me a question this afternoon about the HME, MHE contract. Vic, you've asked questions. Bat, you were in yesterday signing vouchers and you asked them questions.
I've asked questions throughout the year, I mean, some answers come quicker than others.
And Mr. Fryban, you as well, know to ask that you can ask questions. And I believe every email that Jessica or I send to the board with items that are going to be on the agenda, I believe, I know I do and I believe she does, the last thing we always say is, if you have any questions, please reach out. We're here to help. You all have our cell phone numbers. So when you get the agenda, you're all four of you, other than the mayor, getting it on the same day, at the same time. If you happen to know something ahead of time, it's because you were in the office and you were asking questions about it while you were signing your vouchers. So please, I encourage you to please call, like trustee Fabro, you had a question about the minutes. That's something you could have talked to Jessica ahead of time that could have been corrected before the meeting even started, instead of doing it at a meeting.
That is true.
Right. So please feel free to reach out to myself or Jessica or, you know, even the mayor beforehand. And we will be happy to sit down and go through anything and everything.
Jessica, I just, it came up later when I was relooking and revisiting the minutes and I wanted to bring it up and not let it slip by. That's all.
Okay. Anything?
No, I think that's, like I said, think that's important.
Yeah, you're in sewer mode. You're like sewage at brain. Anything? Okay. Yes.
We all got the same amount of time to look at the documents before a village board meeting. I don't think that's ever been different than it is now, correct me if I'm wrong. But besides that, it's always been a day before, two days before. And I don't know about every member of this board because I don't know them well. But I'm a working mother of two, full-time, work at a pretty high-level job. And I always found the time to do my research and my homework as a board member because that's what you do as an elected official. And I don't know what could be done to mitigate that, but I just know that things happen and come across. I mean, you don't really have a lot of time between meetings, most times, to make agendas and everything gets done so that everything can be captured, so it's not, nothing is sitting there. sitting there. But I always found that when I would come to sign vouchers, or, or see you somewhere in town, I'd say, hey, I have a question. And it was always answered, I have a question for Rob. I think one of my first meetings, you were buying a car or something, and I didn't understand it, and it was, it was something that you answered for me very quickly. So, I think it's what you make of it, and you forged relationships you want to have with your fellow colleagues in the village, and that's all I have to say about that. And I just want to make sure, did I say that clear enough?
Yeah.
That I won't be misrepresented by anybody in the future for saying something? Okay, great. Thank you. Have a, have a lo, have a lovely evening.
Jessica?
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Vic Furelli.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, but I want to thank everybody for, for the vote. Thank you for re-electing Susan and myself. The vote, the turnout was overwhelming, so I can't thank you enough. I really appreciate it. The, the people coming out, the support that we had, was just unbelievable. I haven't seen anything like that in this town in years. So, again, I just want to say thank you. I can't get to everybody, so this is the best I can do to thank everybody that supported us. And really, that's all I want to say at this point, is thank you, and then wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Vic. Susan Suriello.
First, I want to say, I was so proud of everybody that came out, because I think finally, people just realize that we do have a voice, and your vote counts. It was overwhelming to see the support, the amount of text messages, and I didn't feel, there wasn't a sense for me that, yay, I won. It was, for me, it was a sense of community, and that we together have, we have a voice. And you chose Vic and I to take that role, and we take that very seriously. We are here for the residents. We want your input. We want to hear your side, and we take that very seriously, and we are very thankful. I am also extremely thankful for, not only for all the residents of Woodbury, but for particular people that took a leadership role to try to get people to come out and vote. And I'll specifically say, you know, Jimmy, Lisa, who walked with me, hills and stairs, and we were huffing and puffing, but we got it done. Martha, Martha Lopez, Ray and Jackie Hernandez, and when you see people that, it didn't matter what party line we were on, we were together working for Woodbury, and that's, I, I can't stress that enough. It doesn't matter what party, at this local level. We have, I'd also like to thank Maria Hunter, because she was our campaign manager and handles all our finances, and she's always full of fabulous advice for us. With that being said, thank you, everybody, and that's why we just wanted to have like a little celebration today, just to say, we did it, we came together, and we proved we can have a voice, and we can choose the direction Woodbury's going in. So, with that being said, I would like to also say that this, tomorrow and Saturday at 7:00 PM, the high school is putting on The Three Musketeers. It is possible that I gave birth to one of those musketeers.
I contributed to one of the musketeers.
A different one, though. It was a different one. Okay, not the same. Okay.
No.
I just needed to clarify that.
Maybe we should do some blood tests.
Actually, it's, it's pretty nice that my son and Andrew's son are, are two of the three musketeers.
Because they've been, they've been together.
They've been together since we moved here in, no, not St. Paul. We, no, we moved here when Jacob was in, starting first grade, and that's Camp Rez, that summer, they met, and they're still friends to this day. There are four kids from Woodbury in, in the Leeds. There is secretly a fourth musketeer, and that is a Woodbury kid, and the other Leeds is another Woodbury. So, if you guys want to come out, the tickets are $8 apiece, $5 for students and seniors. It's at 7:00 PM, and the kids would love your support. They've worked really hard, long hours, as Andrew knows, our kids are always in rehearsal. A lot of cool sword fighting, too, so I just wanted to kind of put that out there. And other than that, I want to say, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Please enjoy your families. Give everybody a hug. Laugh, eat, drink a little, and have a great time. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, trustee Suriello. Trustee Fabro.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank you all for coming. I'll circle back to the comments earlier. We all lead busy lives here, understandably, and I do my best to, you know, like all of you, study up on our agenda items and vote appropriately. And I'd like to go back and thank Vic and Sue, or congratulate you rather, for your reelection. I'm looking forward to working with you over the next year. And beyond that, I'd like to offer my condolences for Dariel Vasquez, his family, and friends and colleagues. His life was cut short too soon in that fire. Rest in peace. And to the rest of the firefighters fighting the Jennings Creek Fire, they all deserve our support and praise, and hopefully, they get that fire extinguished soon, and I want to offer my prayers for their continued safety. And look for the Village of Grooman Lake and the town of Warwick for more updates on that, or Woodbury Fire Department, if you're looking to donate supplies. And thank you to everybody who donated supplies as well. The Climate Smart Pumpkin Smash was a success. We're looking forward to next year. And the Women of Woodbury will be having a craft fair at the senior center, I believe, November 30th. And also, hope you all have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Fabro. Trustee Fryban.
Thank you. I, I want to join Matt in congratulating both Vic and Sue on the next term. I'm sure that, I, I hope to have a very cooperative arrangement where we can do the best we can for the village. I'm also going to give copies of the statements that I made tonight, so that they're reflected in the minutes, because I do want to focus on these issues. We need to get the sewer issue clarified quickly, because it would have, obviously, will have a great impact on, actually, the entire business community, as well as many homeowners. And I also want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and remind you that our next meeting is December 17th. So, there's a month, month to work all this stuff out in our heads and get going again. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Fryban. Yes, I said, right. So, let me start with the fires. Unless you've been living with her, you want me to drink something? Oh, I gotta pitch the...
Mic.
Oh, the mic. Do I really need the mic?
Mic.
Really? I'm usually pretty loud. Okay. Is that better? So, these fires that we've had, all volunteer firemen fighting for, for days now, it, it spotlights two things. One is the need for more. More firemen, more fire personnel. It is one of the biggest issues we're facing in Woodbury. Susan and I have tried to address that with recruitment drives through the high school. It was one of the issues that we spoke to Dr. Norman about, was more recruitment, but that's also part of the issue. When our firefighters went on that first run there, where they brought apparatus there, the first thing running through my head was that these firefighters are, are really like my kids' age, like they're young, okay? They're 25, 26, 21. They are babies, and they are out there giving their all, doing what, what they trained to do. So, I have the utmost respect for each and every one of them downstairs. I think the, the fire itself is just one of many. I think you've all seen the motor vehicle accidents on Route 6, and the motor vehicle accidents on the thruway. These are all responded by our volunteers, and not just the fire department, but the Woodbury Ambulance Corps. And they are always desperate for more people. Many hands make light work. So, I want to give a big shout-out to the men and women downstairs, because they have done and continue to do a heck of a job. The other issue it spotlights is, we haven't had rain in 10 weeks. It's at least 10 weeks. Okay? Now, our, our water levels are holding up pretty well, okay? The new well that we put online has worked, but I am just gonna ask, just conserve where you can, okay? We're not in a water restrictions or anything else like that, but it's just smart, okay? The last thing I want is to have a fire here in Woodbury, and not have water available for them. So, do your part. Shut off the water when you're brushing your teeth, short of showers. Heck, I'm sure the county wants us to not flush the toilets at all, okay? So, please, please.
Did we take an order at the end of the night?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Jimmy's Porter Party? We're gonna set that up someplace, and the money will go towards our sewer expansion. It'll be part of that whole thing.
Yeah, I don't want to get too, when I was a kid, it was, one of the neighbors had an issue, and it was like, if it's yellow, let it mellow. If it's brown, flush it down. There was a sign in the bathroom, like handwritten sign, and I always remember.
You see, ladies and gentlemen...
We don't want to get to that.
This is the good advice that you get at a Village of Woodbury meeting. You're not gonna get that in any other Gosheen, Warwick. No! You get it here in the Village of Woodbury. So, please, continue to come and bring pastries.
I brought pastries.
Yes, I know, I didn't even eat any. All right, so, the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce, okay? They held two events recently, and I gotta tell you, they did a phenomenal job, okay? It is a very small group of volunteers, in this day and age, that are literally running the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce, okay? They did a meet and greet, and I thought, other than some inappropriate comments, I thought it was very well-done. And then, on top of that, it was not at the, at the trunketry, but it just grows, and it's gotten larger, and larger, and larger. So, the chamber needs help. We need more local businesses to be involved. We need more ideas. They need more people. What I'm going to be doing, the anti-business mayor of Woodbury, me, Andrew Jacobaza, am going to be appointing Vic Furelli as kind of our Woodbury Chamber of Commerce liaison and my business rep for the Village of Woodbury. There's a lot we can do together with the chamber. They have, like, the base is there, the foundation is there, with Joey, and Desiree, and Maria Hunter, and whatnot. They just need more. They need more local businesses to be involved, and since we are all working with various business entities, I think it's just a, a good progression to move forward with. I want to thank Tara Burek. They did a training session here with Craig Brady and her husband, Chris Gerver, that I was hoping, there was a good turnout, but it really should've been more people, because it honestly was very educational, the way that Chris and Craig kind of, I, I want to say dumbed it down, but it simplified the village planning and zoning board processes. So, I would love to be able to do this on a, either a twice-a-year basis or a yearly basis, to have this open house, and have the residents come in, and at least potentially learn something on why decisions are made by the planning board. It's not like, oh, they, how could they approve that? Well, there's a process that goes along with it. So, I want to thank Tara. I did, and it's, and we did put it on YouTube. It's on there, it's on the website also. I didn't even know that.
On YouTube.
It's on YouTube.
You can get it to the web.
Okay, so you can actually watch it, sit at home, bag of popcorn, pastries. You can sit on his commode there, right? And do what you need to do. We, the other thing we did here was, we did Narcan Training, and the turnout was very good with that. And it was important. We did put it out there to the schools, Sue and I, to see if they would have anybody come down for it. Kind of short notice, though, I think by the time we got to them. But it is something that I just want to continue here, that we do. It was something that was a partnership between the ambulance corps, and the fire department, and the police department of Woodbury, along with the village. So, it was very informational. I, I just, it's just something we also need to consider doing on a more regular basis.
I, I agree. I think that it's very beneficial, and I think next time, I think our meeting with the school and that event, they were so close together that we just didn't have enough time, the school didn't have enough time to put it out to enough students, so I think next time, we, of course, will be more. I learned a lot. I didn't know anything about it, and I just decided it was probably in my best interest, just in case, to have a kid at home, and it doesn't hurt, and from how to administer it to...
Yep.
You know, every step of the process, it was, and, and somebody's story, that why they're there teaching that for, to us. So, it was, it was a fabulous event, and I think we definitely need to do it again in the new year, in the spring, maybe.
And everybody who did attend got a...
Yeah.
An emergency case, so to speak, with Narcan inside, to administer. So, it was, like I said, it was educational, it was, hopefully, nobody will ever have to use it, but if you do have to use it, you at least have been trained on it, and you've been given some, some, something to use during that process. So, that was great. I want to thank Keep It Moving, because it really was their organization. They had a death in the family, their son died, and they made, they took lemons and made lemonade out of it. You know, they, they are going from village to town to city to promote this. So, I do want to thank them. Finally, and this is, this is important for me, there was nobody happier that Vic and Sue won than me, okay? Let's be, I, I will be completely honest. I was the happiest stinking person in the world, okay? Because I needed them back. So, you know the history of this. When I won election, I appointed, we had the opening of my seat, and I appointed Vic Furelli, mainly because I knew he would rubber stamp everything I threw in front of him. Okay? But I appointed Vic, and then, when I had a secondary opening when Jesus Gomez had moved, that was when I appointed Sue Suriello. And I appointed them because I had worked with both of them for years. Sue and I were on the Central Valley Elementary PTA together, okay? Little Miss Taskmaster over there, making sure my minutes were lockstep, okay? Worst job ever, right? So, and Vic and I go back to our days on the zoning board, like, just walking in, and that knucklehead was there. And, and he still smelled of Bengay and prune juice back then. And that was at least, I don't know, eight years ago. So, on behalf of me, I want to thank the, everybody in Woodbury, Jimmy, Ray, Jackie, Lisa, there were so many people that went out there, Martha, especially Martha, went out there and just knocked on doors, and, and many of you in this room did that, and made sure that I got back the people I needed, okay? Because I was scared, okay? And nothing scares me, except for cuttlefish. That is the only thing that scares me, is the cuttlefish. Okay? So, anyway, with that being said, did I really roll that in there? Well, okay. Thank you. All right, with no further business to discuss, our comments received, I'll accept a motion in a second to adjourn this meeting.
Motion.
Second. All right, I got motion in a second, trustee Furelli and Suriello. Our next scheduled meeting is December 17th. Until then, remember, when Chuck Norris was born, he drove his mom to the hospital. I, I try to get original.